I have really had the stress on my mind. I have days before moving on. On any month, you know.
Very short term, so short terms of the state.
I want to be even my duty. You might get your money. You might get your money. They take us three times out of my head. It's really for certain example, they tell me four seven. Because every year. Yeah, it's not one month. And they think the union, they come along, they give you my money. But I told them, they go like, you know, money, my money. Then you don't want nothing. So they never want anything. They go, I wrote, I wrote, I got my money for the union. They call me, we were nine and a half, I was in time. Already nine and a half, I'm 59. And I love my house. That was very much. And I told them, the same that you plan to start pension three months. See you later. You have to be like one. And now is the same. One sexy for the timer. And for the, you know, you see this paper, your health. You have dinner. I have to do the A D and B. It's not true. I don't, I don't know when I can become a nerd. But you take all. Is there, you have anything you cannot feel?
Okay, we may have a host today.
Yes, Dan Ramon. Okay, we will call to order June 23rd meeting of U Pechos Water District. Uh, let's stand for the plan of alliance. Hi, I'm Julie Stupac. United is like going to stand on issue. Under God, invisible, difficult, just a call. Okay, is there any public comment?
The Checo started to work your comments. Each speaker will limit their presentation to 12 minutes. When you're in the trust, easy zoom for phone change, please your name, account, which you write for rec. Please address the trust as all chair. If you're debating zoom, like the participant having like the right icon. If you think a phone is nine, you're to right will hear you have the muted. And here's some that would no comment.
Okay, there's public comment. We will move on to the incentive agenda. Is there a motion to approve the incentive agenda?
I'm going to the content agenda.
Is there a second? All the favor, I opposed. All right, consent agenda is approved. So we'll move on to the regular gen removal of the repair projects.
Could the trustees even work industry to be here in the evening? And in point one, we're going to provide date guarding the re-removal and levy repairs. So um progress, three goods. That's our last meeting. Uh, we're getting the re-remove. Uh, we were called to remain at the north east quadrant of the um Brazilian bridge and ours lane. And so with her, uh, there is a large pile debris that was moved in the creek. And so what we decided on was county public works is going to be with the fire department up there with the next couple of weeks. So I'm literally live and get fire difference to get in because what we decided in public works is we need to make piles more, spread piles out. Then we need guidance for it and I'll burn because in the middle of water eventually. And so um they need some assistance from the department. And so that's crap. We did have actually a couple of meetings out there sites. And so we're making one pot to let burn. And you know, set piles of be those in the creek anyway. And we just have one pile left remaining. And levy pairs, another good news. Um, actually, yeah, last week, Friday, believe, the repairs have all been pleaded. So that's very good news. Uh, in public, we still perform a business on a little chin that was finished last week. Uh, the contractor was some notification, they believe they're complete. And the geotech engineer has sent off on the caution of the league. So it's me compact comments. And so the big milestones, that means for folks that might be lying, just want to update. All scope of work at the district has been attempted to accomplish has been constructed. And that also includes some additional embank repairs. The southwest quadrant of the Brazilian bridge was also pleaded a few weeks ago. So insurance is pleaded, but I probably won't worry about to confirm a few things um in those remedies. So I pause there for public or cost from the trustees.
Uh, I question actually not related to repair themselves, but since we're talking about it. Uh, as the contractor, has the contractor been paid for the work on the lower scene southwest quadrant? Well, yeah.
Yes, they have. So um they pay. Uh, only was we did on time mailed check, which delayed thing maybe phased it to be contracted. But everything's processed on time and much faster than perhaps previous bill payments.
Okay, that's fun, sure.
You bet. It is good news.
Um, now for last, these lever pairs, I think, trying to remember because I've been really busy. This was end, but you still want to give a subbit. So when that was done and approved, will you let me know when the consent? It because it did submit an voice, right? For that one.
Correct, they demand the last voice, or there'll be repair, there may be repair. Um, and I'll try it out there in a couple of days to confirm. And we process the payment and that'll be the full payment.
Yes, thank you. I mean, it took two years, true, but but it got where you got done.
The rest of the debris, you said?
Yeah.
There's still lots of to do at that as far as the current projects are coming.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Thank you, thank you, Steve, and all of the county for your hard work and that. All right, now, you have some good news for us on five. Oh, wait.
Public comment?
A comment on five point one.
The Republican.
Thank you. Okay, so let's find five point two.
All right, we'll do five point update on status of fee applications. Yes, so many good news in the fee implications. So they've gone through the um that requires they to get to a where they all obligation a fuss. And so what that means is he made it a lot of documents, a lot of things submitted. They say, hey, I think this projects qualifies, stands for obligation payment reimbursement. So it's much the final step in the process before going to actually page stage, but it's good thing. So I'll talk about debris removal first. And so um the cost that FEMA, this isn't necessarily cost contract, but the cost that FEMA was fair based on their measurements and their team. They determined tell us the pick was 935,000. Um, their fee share 70% which is 101,000 and change. Then the state Cal O L O E S, which is the um emergency service department of the state. For important that fee doesn't pay. So he says we're paying 700,000 and then typically the state is okay, will chip in 75% of the remainder to the 205,000. Which remains roughly 6% generally is repaid by the agency. And this project is $50,000 and it's not a prize, it's just a goal. Um, now, one thing that's been the last couple of weeks is feet said, okay, now that you're obligated, we think we'll be paying. We also pay for what the management costs are called Vagor Z costs is in the brush. And that's typically flat of percent of the overall price cost of 935,000. Now, the management cost to survey those, we're going to look at staff time, any time this build to the project. Because it does this, you know, cut check 40,000, $750 for management cost. They set us that amount or perhaps time to work in a project, we'd send them invoices and hopefully get versus some of the cost. Now, the trigger with that is because trustees are not paid, you are the district. This little bit of question, we're together count costs and count staff time like dress time and all those multiple meetings and some of those things. We'll submit those. We don't know truly if the 36,000 will be reimbursed because it's a strict reverse per management. So we'll try to work together so you can come up with um butts in three as people here are not made by anyone. And we very much appreciate it. Don't know how much 4,000 will be on.
I guess I didn't, I was the management cost not on radar. And if they actually do give that, I'm in terms of total remuneration, the county will be, will be pretty close to the records. I mean, in terms of cash we get from the county and I know it um if not, if we actually do that management cost.
Yeah, well, with the trustees, our staff and FEMA, see how that all works in the end.
Um, it occurred to you that never, do we have a mo you with the county? Did we, did you take care of that very beginning? Because don't call now.
So when the county owns the district, the points a million, that was the mo you.
Right, no, I know that. Was there, was there, did that, did that include mention of staff time? I, I don't remember now.
I recall, I'll check that. Um, I'm sure it did end.
Would that help?
It might, it might.
Really, I don't know, no, you know, two years later. Um.
Yeah, and back on and for what it worth, the, the man costs, say it's a complete, so probably it's even since our, as we own through county projects. They did it at some, you possibly quite management costs on count products, count fee project. But um it's the work, work worth of 305,000. The work, work worth of 305,000. The cost is 281,000, this will be 70,000. The non-verse will be 23, the cost is 281,000, this will be 70,000. The non-verse will be 23, 20, 20,000 essentially, which is 6% that's over the total loss. Again, last thousand essentially, which is 6% that's over the total loss. Again, last week, last week, it might have been weeks ago, dilate management loss of 18,000. So very news. Um, it might have been weeks ago, dilate management loss of 18,000. So very news. Um, and just big picture, think if we subtracted out recent work, and just big picture, think if we subtracted out recent work. Bank restoration, bank restoration at the southwest corner. To tune, oh, 100,000 nation at the southwest corner. To tune, oh, 100,000 change. Um, we, we were hoping for closer to say, you know, somewhere around 1.4 millionish in fee overall. But there, you know, add just again, but I often won't agree with any agent's cost estimate and it's awesome. So it's very good news. So um, you know, start assessing these reimbursement requests and we get some cash flowing back to the original monuments. And go from there, solve us our questions.
But you were saying, um, you was that?
What you Miranda, but standing, just basically between public entities, that is, uh, insane agreement, they call Miranda understanding. It's like, we'll do this and partner way. And it's kind of a framework for an agreement between two public entities.
Yeah, but I was just talking about that because I thought we'd have that in meeting, that county would perform all the service for us. Terms of managing project, that may fee would be more likely to approve the management costs, so.
And it's possible, I'll read it, I'll see a couple of ways and can all get to, I'll show county council to get it simple as well. County halftime cost and that darts a little and see if it did, so to speak. But ideally, it's also in the mo use. Good new role.
It's very good news again, thank you. Um, of course, we don't know any idea when we'll actually get money.
I can tell you for county projects that have finished obligated for six months, they've been made on 3% of them so far. Um, and we don't know the rest. No, fingers crossed. Um, yes, um, hopefully, so security agencies after the FEMA summary X per presentation before the meeting starts.
That's not a.
Well, good news.
Okay, is there any public comment on number five point two?
There is a public manager on.
All right, then let's move on to five point three. Um, this other piece of news, it's nothing good news, Steve.
Good news, thank you.
Yes, okay.
So um just sort of street folks that be listening online. Uh, 26 months ago, the federal government's had some extra disaster refund available for some states and specific disaster events. And so for our county, Samuel County, we specifically were allocated 0.9 million dollars for infrastructure was directly tied to storms of technically late 2023. The reason I did this for 2020, 2024 is there were other county agencies that other disasters in 24 are part of the program. For our county, we were allocated 9 million dollars for infrastructure, a roads or a construction project is directly related to the storms in 2023, 2023. Few months before that. And did that, our county specifically allocated 9.6 million dollars to disasters that could be preventing future flood and future fires. Um, helping the community during a future disaster event. And so what the system so far to this group, which is actually the housing community development group, HCD, which also part of HCD. Basically, we, we said it states far intent to leave that money to be used for the 0.9 million. We said, well, Lewis Lane itself is typical flood in our large tournaments. So can we rebuild lovers itself so that can queue eight of others? So that's how we tied 0.9 million. Um, so and that's about would be did to rebuild lovers. Um, they may think it's a good use of money. So it's one of the projects to submit. We said the project, at this point, it's all draft to talk about in a minute. For the ninth sixth name, we also made a request for form hydraulic study of a Checo pre water shed to the new about half a million dollars. So that we'd assess water shed. And what that does is the study is open other funding for treaties because we say, oh, we need to help this part of the creek. Or need to rebuild these or need to do X, Y, Z. A lot of grants they want to, this is set at first. And so it's really good. This all goes a little more real yep, kind of swing just based timing things. So now we've had a discussion just we on the 18th, met team in that discussion specifically for the AC was ordered the. Now, that decision, we got up again, was we can submit, the county can submit projects on behalf of special districts, like Pechos Storm District or other district. So that was brought up and they said, you can do that. Because really, the water study, well, we're going to say it's for the county, but it's go for picks for the Checo Stormwater District. So the assignment, one of the things they said for school is you, the time you get through process and do the study, you might be the county. You might want to think about doing projects that can be constructed, implemented sooner rather than waiting for result of that first study. And you say, you know, if you do this, but it's me do the study. And then the C says, okay, Nicku, these are projects, the other projects could go through environmental view. And then they can be built, well, they have about five years to do, ever to do technically 20, 30, so it'll be four years. So our thought is to use other portion of 9.6 million to try to clean up the creek in the district, in this district, and the upstream district as well. Because it can happen, the study is ongoing. So um we can worry about this as we go, but we had just get another meeting on time July. But we have a six to figure out what projects are being, and full disclosure, there's other issues, I think county needs some issues, my sympathy. And so, you know, to be fair, I'm not sure 0.9 million going to go to the Brazilian area, but a chunk of it, the cap will try to direct to the leveling area. Um, I'll pop there. In addition to that, just having assistance and funding things, which we have a little detail on that, we'll go to that. But um again, most of this happens in spring. The good news was June 16th, the state approved, giving money to Samuel County, all the cities and other counties. And so the grants plan was approved. That plan typically includes projects I mentioned, so losing and study, they're not official, but at a minimum, that was part of the block. And so I'll pop there, might have some question or the book might some questions.
My question is, uh, when they give them money to start in the back of their jobs, when you and they started next year, I don't know they're going to reduce you, you know, to at least start to do the gap.
Right, so they break money for any project studies until next spring. And so next spring, they say, oh, you want to build a Brazilian, you can have design team design it, which would take probably lover in four months, design, rebuild in less lane. Then you got to bid and then maybe, maybe I next end of next summer, maybe you start building lover lane or have to start building Brazilian in the spring of 2027, just like saying. Because to the design of lover lane, you know, first initially. So similarly with the creek, we wanted to clean out creek and to get environment consultant on board. We had a yes, beer a couple of months ago. Then they would have started proceedings permit, doing sequences, just cleaning out that creek to the person to get the creek. That likely take most of 2026, so that we really can start that work probably until 2027. So just even use any money until bring up to 26 for ending. So yeah, good question.
So when you say clean the creek, what's that like? The breeders? Whatever, whatever, let us. Because for me, clean out the creek is more like, let's shove some of that base out of there. Because I know the breed pilot, it just a growth already and seed already, right, a bridge.
Ooh, it, um, news is that, the good news is growth there today, the city thickness and whatnot, it's maybe 5% or whatever percentage. It's a small percentage of a dam of a loop wooden bridges that we just removed with project. But I agree, mother nature is already keeping her snow in creek and things ready to go. So, you know, between now and this, we'll have to figure out what looks like, what we can get permitted because it's great. The easy permit is take those dead things like we before was easy, the tougher permits are taking sediments and going things out of the creek. Those are the tougher person to obtain from agency. So we're just going to make decision, everybody in this room and some other success in this room, and what we think if fee goal. Um, my recommendation will be to essentially set into and going things out of the creek and then loose the course as well. So that my recommendation, there's permits and fun things to do there, but yeah, so.
Is there a record to what the, the case to be?
So probably not the end you're going to hear, but the study that talked out for the half a million dollars, that would provide that type of information. Say it would look at all the cross sections, creek, hundred storm and see your section should look like X. And I might say need to remove four feet of sand out of the creek or two feet of cement out of certain parts of the creek or more or less, right? That's what state would tell us. Unfortunately, that's he's going to be about 2026 and then we know in 2027. But can be some of those permits the same time, not the exact data, maybe the same time with those big clean permits. One thing that basically this said, I can go with that, it probably realistic to then four years, 2020 to 2030 to perform this study. We're going to take 2026 and get to 2027 and then do um heavy repairs because it's a whole other product with its own skill. And I don't even know what the project looks like till we do the first day. So um as we mentioned, it took us two years to these forward pairs, some straightforward meaning and to do. Yeah, but I think we do a lot of things with that 0.9 million, just to clean out, I got creek, probably 2027 or 20, I don't think exactly. I mean, probably 27, um, I think we can do more things for Pechos Creek.
But is there all, excuse me, is there all notes somewhere to what that is from the past tree at all?
It might be historical curve of when you said rebuild two bridges, lovers like same fleet bridge, we could look at the crossings, I think sections of the whole creek is strictly um.
Well.
The fly of the.
What about that USR core report from 1974? Was there anything in?
I can, I can look, I don't remember flow lines of the creek, those type of informing, but I'll, because we, yeah, then 1973 reports, I'm getting information in. Maybe if I hit the watershed then, and it turns something's um, I'll look and see.
Thank you.
You bet.
Yes, the cube is extremely good news. Um, all right, are there any black men on five point B?
There is no public comment in here, they're on.
Okay, next item for Steve five six, yes.
Yeah, we went just over four and five or.
Um, uh, maybe, we'll do that. Since you're standing there already, why don't we that? Why don't we talk about that? Because this actually wreck, I'm all, I'll go back to five, four, five, five. So item five point six is about the Cowan Conservation Corps. I think that it's directly rated conversation with hat.
It's a little.
So um, but I'll let you go ahead and then your invasion.
So two things, one, the county, I mean, in this nation, need to provide the proper access letters to trustees to do potential site walk along the ways. With ID, a local project manager, Calvin Conservation Corps. And that's always separate in first point, which um, my name is Janet, I can give her last name, but she's done a job with DC. Janet actually was our local project manager of corps. She retired about two weeks ago, roughly. And so I don't know if a replacement yet, or they have a tentative replacement person. But I'll reach out some, and I send the letters to trustees here. And the goal is kind of what the creeks for and some thoughts on how possibly the trustee could determine if this is remaining 40-ish thousand dollars in creek clips. I think was the possible discussion I, um, so, so yeah, so those things, this test, this item. And they do a temporary place for Janet and maybe it's going to be a permanent place. I don't know the person's name was in the email, but I'll ask their question, so.
My question is, um, if we, so we were talking about CDB money in last item. I, I guess I didn't realize if the intent is to use some of that 6 million clean, clean up. Does it make sense? Because whatever we're going to do for $4,000 isn't going to be a whole lot and it'll just be on the V really. Does it make sense to hopefully able to? Does it make sense to hopefully be able to do a major creek cleanup sometime in 27, 2028, something like that?
Yeah, it's a great question for the trustees to consider. I'll tell you this much, or get in the creek with some machinery and its own cost, contract costs. It'll come about between eight and a thousand dollars per day, depending on various things. You could get a segment of the creek with 40K. You know, obviously, we cleaned up a good part of the site from Lovers Lane, every mile away, San Flee Road on the creek to the tune of $9,000. Now, those were very large piles of debris and things that were damming potentially creek, not so much digging to the creek and doing some things. I'm saying is, well, put that aside for, we'll save eight thousand dollars to five is, we get about a week of some cleanup. And I'd say you'd want to see what that really means through you into the creek if you want to spend the three thousand. I think we talked about before is make it for a team and they tried to total, I don't remember the number, I say it was $8,000 a week for the team to go in and grab saw things and, you know, they have chainsaws and, you know, doing some chains on branches were most dead, taking some things out, I believe were about half tax of the contract would be, I would say they were about $7,000 a week. I'll go back in my notes, you'd have the EC's team a couple of weeks out there doing cleanup. So it's thing to consider with the, for me, half, and I'll just pop there, so.
Any thoughts from the trustees? Eight? Okay, I'm, yeah, is there any point in, do we walk through if we're not, or we want to spend the money? Oh, I mean, eventually you're going after this, even for the gap that hope will happen. The question is, do we, we start sending letters now and looking at it? Or do we, do we wait?
Correct, so, yeah, that's a determination of trustees. I mean, perhaps in the course of action would be, go state step, county conservation corps, their project manager, whoever the replacement is, or their job is to kind of, you on site, in storm, provide ideas, some input, let, let the team know what they accomplish and what they can't accomplish. And so that would still be worthwhile and be worthwhile. Now it's worthwhile, the month's ones are going more or less. I'd still, because at least you'll have idea, this Steve Burger or whoever is going to be on board, when we elect, we'll say, he thinks it's worth it or not worth it, and prove me say. Now, I forgot when the elections are so for me, but also till the new trustees are active and this visit, when those folks, she's here or whoever are active, and those folks perform site bits and get opinions. So that might be kind of, and be particularly, so.
Yeah, the action, I believe is the very end of July. Could be, I'm wrong.
I was informed by the election department that the people who applied, VHSD were appointed blue, so.
Oh, no election?
There's no election.
Oh, okay.
We have trustees, I believe you apply, have trustees next year, trustee, Bill Ford and Rochelle Lee.
Okay, all right. And are, well, okay, so we have a four-person board?
Yes.
Okay, and they, so don't have an election, they were appointed. When did they, when did it start?
They will start at beginning of next year because your terms are till December of 2025, so.
Okay, all right.
So very first.
Okay, all right, so, okay, well, thank you actually for that, because changing is a little, so it's three-person board through the end of the year, this calendar. All right, well, I mean, we could still do this. I might, this is sort of, I think that the California Conservation Corps could still be really useful. What I'm imagining now is like making us in, I don't know, five years with going like cleanup, you know, and that's sort of stuff. Because I'll tell you what, that forest that's going on our part of the creek, I mean, I'm going to one look at it and like, say, no, we can't, there's not much we can do here, but I could be wrong. So, all right, well, do we want to do now then? Do we want to see what they can do just for informational purposes? Or we want to just put it off completely?
Because you know that they do not remove the vein product off the creek. It don't happen once to death.
Because I was just talking about this, because when it's needed, needed piece of it, they don't want. Especially when it's not native, it's live, that's there, especially not due to that.
Only, it's none of it, it's dead. Only when it's going to be a problem, they have to be there to remove.
Yeah.
The one is not alive.
So I mean.
And then, I mean, the rest alive.
I'm thinking creek has pretty good cleanup from the removal. Well, no, not all, part of it's by my house, it's a fresh space, it's alive, it's alive, you're right, it's alive, you're right, it's alive. And they will be picked, dead stuff. Well, there's been, actually quite a bit to, to prove, not all of it is live. But I don't, but again, I don't know if that's a good use of the money right now, you know? That's not where letting been happening.
It's so good, it's over there, now we're writing in English, Luke Lambou.
Oh, yeah, stuff, be a run, run.
Yeah, you're right, it's very similar to Bambiya.
Yeah, we have that, there's some of that, we have some of that. But California Conservation Corps, they're going to be removing that, they?
If it's allowed, it's a solid agreement without permit.
I mean, there's, I'm sure that they find things too. I know, and actually, I know Rochelle's idea was for them to draw off levees that, you know, could walk better on the levees. Because she think, well, for instance, if USRCOR was to come out to do a visit. The problem is, we don't know when that can happen and, you know, could clean up the leaves and then, you know, in six months, it'll be over gone again.
It would mean removing, I.
I don't know if we can do that on top of the levees, that's our question.
I know they've talked about this for a long time, the HNA department, all they want to protect, you know, the plants, the fish, everything. And they supposed to help with that in the problem, you know? I think these people, they can take creek, they like about the animal, they leave the creek, it's everything, this from a start. Because you can add this tree, you can add this, you can clean it, the fish is there, you know? It's a, it's a big problem there, you know? You have the bull, it grow every year, it's bigger than, you know? And you're not tired because the fish is there, it's this addition. I love, I'm a sad person, I love Paul Manam.
Well, I mean, we're going to apply these permits and, you know, we have, there'd be a bit of back and forth, right? With Fish and Wildlife out it.
Yeah, I think just to refresh us, when we had the Belgians from NISF, speaking remotely, I say, gosh. They helped with the lake stream with all race agreement, which gave permit cleanup creek here. To apply, and if he gave a number or I have a number, but just have them do the application for this. That's perfect, just to submit the permit documents. The top that, the annual permits you do, you submit to near 3K or some minus, whenever you form notice. And I get what I'm getting at is, in my sense, start applying the permits to do those things we're talking about. Because utilize every penny that the district has, which is I think 40,000 maximum. So California Conservation Corps come out, remove dead things that are falling down and not attached to thing and not provide any hat to, encourage some. We could wait the new trustee to come on board anyway and take the site, it's, you know, a couple of months, just there, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the reason that we're talking about California Conservation Corps begin with was when we would have known, we would, we want to do something, right? And, and now things are different, right? I mean, we have this, we're looking at the money in 2026 from HUD and which will allow us to do a lot more. So, I don't know, I'd be inclined to save our needs, we might need in the future to hire consultants to grant other grants or, you know, for our, our share or whatever the budget, you know, there's always cost sharing, right?
Grants are cost sharing.
So for those sort of expenses, I'd be inclined to keep it that.
I agree, and I think we just kind of hold off, hold off, we come into the new term. Right now is the first time to be there, take care of this, but we should hang on to my right now.
Okay, your direction, enough, revisit in six months?
Yes, yes.
Sounds good.
All right.
And I'll allow some other info to do.
Yeah, let's go 5.4, let's go back. I shouldn't too long, this is a just update. So on June 10th, Rochelle and I, by the way, Rochelle and Marshall are in Switzerland on their latest one, that's why I'm not here. But Rochelle and I attended virtually this meeting of the Paharo River Water Resilience Program. So it's taken me a little while to figure out what all of this is, but I think I understand it now. So the California Department of Water Resources get out some grant money, something that they call, it's a pilot grant, the Water Resilience Program. And they paid five water sheds, right, and project was how, how to build resilience on rivers, right, in creek to adapt to comedic dreams. So Paharo River Water Bed was one of them selected. And our creek, Chaco Creek, is part of the Paharo River Water Bed. So they're having a series meeting, they had first one March, which none of attend. Then they, this one June, where they were, they invited a whole lot of people from interested parties, right? So there were presented to various local governments, there was a lot of environmental people, and then there were people from water districts, like industrial districts, hours. And so they had this meeting, they broke sound into groups based on what part of water shed we in. And it turned, we're in the upper Paharo watershed, so we was a smaller group, we talked about things related to the upper Paharo watershed. And they, and they were focusing on flowing extreme zippichun. And it's a pretty good, I mean, they really just want to hear what our perspective were. I was really glad that Rochelle and I were there because we actually talked quite a bit about Pacheco Creek and our flooding. And I felt good about it because I felt like finally, you know, this is local, it's also state level, right? Because this is a state program. I felt like finally we're getting some attention, like, you know? I mean, they, I, I related about the thing that we brought to the attention, I spoke quite a bit, so did Rochelle. So I don't know what come of that, but I was hoping to do some networking to get attention for our area and think that we'd that. So the next meeting is an interesting meeting in August in Wassenville, where they posed to, so this was meeting June was about prioritizing vulnerability. So they, they want to talk about how we're vulnerable, of course, we have a lot to say here about how Chaco Creek is vulnerable. So next, they're going to talk about initial adaptation strategies. So I guess what do you do of the vulnerability, how do you quote unquote adapt? And they're going to prioritize that's October, and then they're going to draft their plan in February next year. So I don't know if I'll be able to go to the interim meeting, the other two, October, February, October 20th year, February of next year, supposed to be remote meetings, so hopefully I can go. If anybody's interested, now I can forward email that I got. But again, it's hard, you know, it's hard to say exactly how this is going to benefit, but making connections and making people aware of, of joy here. So thought is worthwhile. Okay, just a bit of any, um, question? Okay, I just realized, did I call for public comment on 5.6?
I don't know.
Okay, we do that now?
Yeah, there is no problem at all, or any.
Okay, 5.6, without, without this one, 5.4, all right. Okay, very good. So you move on, and the STEs, any questions of that? Okay, so then I just wanted to find a date on what, what we can do with other potential land sources. Rochelle's actually been doing most of the work, unfortunately, she's not here, but I did meet her. And so I'll just try to, as best I can understand what's, what's going with what he's been doing. So the first date is on pollinator grant, if you recall, if it was last being in parole, we had Jen from Pollinator Project. It's the project, they provide grant money to plant native vegetation and to attract, you know, butterflies and bees. And Rochelle told me that they decided not to feed us. I don't know exactly what reason is, I'll have to, maybe Rochelle can up this on that next time, excuse me. But I believe it has been to do with, that we're, we're just portion of the creek and though, you know, not whole creek. I think that was the reason, but we'll get more detail. But anyway, I understand from her that they're not, they're not really interested in working at the time. Next, Rochelle was emailing with someone from the California Office of Emergency Services. Been going to these, and they were there, they were discussing grant opportunities. So she followed up with someone from Cal OES about, the long on the show of that is that though, is that really, we're not going to, so, this is again, this California Office of Emergency Services, so it would be disaster-related grants, right, or mitigation-related grants. The problem there is that in order to, as special district, in order to apply for any of the Cal OES grants, we need hazmatization plan. We don't have, we talked about before. But, and we've talked about the two, you know, the county's hazmatization plan is coming up for renewal. And it's not really far away now, I think it's like a year or something. So, you know, those plans are not cheap to develop. So I'm thinking it's point, perhaps we just wait, because the county did say that we could be included in their hazard mitigation. And once, it's could take a couple of years, I guess, for all that. But once there's a base, then we'd be able to use that to apply to the visa grant. Am I understanding correctly, Steve? Yes, okay, right. So I think now, I think Cal OES on pause, right? Then Rochelle also communicated with our friend Jessa from the US Army, or engineer, I was surprised, I guess Rochelle emailed her and she actually heard from her, because I hadn't heard from her. So Jessica did, well, we're communicating with Steve Lubin Bell, so with them, because that hasn't happened yet. But she'd say she was going to try to find operation and make it renewal for Rochelle. So I don't know, we'll see, I just wanted to let in there to say that there, I guess, there's, I, I emailed Jessica, but they're still up there. Then finally, there was a grant, state grant from Fish and Wildlife called the Furies Restoration Grant, Grant. This, this is the one that Rochelle was talking about, where she hoped we could get a grant to do silt, to help segment, right? And it sounds now like we're going to be able to use that money to help me to do that. This may still be something that we want to get. Rochelle was emailing with someone from Fish and Wildlife about this. One of the first obstacles was that this person she was communicating with said, well, we have these maps. And for Steelhead, your area is not on that map, the area of interest, you redevelop the habitat. But it turns out though, but what she said is you have to prove that the creek is habitat for Steelhead. But apparently there is precedent of that. So Rochelle then started emailing Ron McCarter at Valley Water, right? Because Valley Water, if you call, said that part of their justification for new dam, they're playing one of, one of the things they said was that would improve the habitat of Steelhead. I don't know how much time I spent on this, but Ryan Carter at Valley Water then sent Rochelle this, another report. The staff's named Ray, or I guess an emeritus professor, which means he's specifically retired. From NOS State, he's been studying our creek, apparently, his name is Jerry Smith. And there's a report here in front of me from 2021. It sounds like he's studying it specifically for Steelhead, and there's pictures. Actually, Steve, she sent you this report, you might, yeah, I could, I could send, because maybe it's interesting information that's related to some of the questions we were talking about being here. Anyway, there's, there's some diagrams, some measurements, it's interesting, actually. We're talking, this particular report was dated in 2021. Apparently, we were having a bad out here that year, because basically, he's saying the track date went out in September of 21, there was practically no water in the creek at all. So, anyway, I just thought it was, it was an interesting development. I think if you wanted to go forward with Fishers Restoration Grant proposal, I think that it could work. I don't, maybe won't need it now, if you're, you know, going to be able to use that money for this. But it's something we can keep in mind, I think we could demonstrate that is a tap for Steelhead. The grant timeline for this grant, you submit grants in, so that would, would be something that would do in all next year anyway. So, does it seem to be any question about any of that? No? Okay, is there any public comment?
There is no public chamber, or on?
Thank you, okay. So now keep with the postcard mail. Well, I think, actually, you know what, we already proved the logo. We already did, so we actually do put the logo. But the postcard letter and the sign that we want to put on Lovers Lane. So I don't know, I know that Rochelle and Victor have been working on this. So Victor, what do you have for us?
So Pacheco's water district previously reviewed the postcard sign at the April 28th meeting and received a bill from the trustees and the members paying that up. Steph has signed the date, the postcards, we've been hands for, after entry, all trading districts successful. Three rural levee river funded 2020 plus. Updated postcard yearly, ongoing, it's just integral, analyzing opportunities for residents to win money. Meeting held every fourth May at Friday 1 or 3, Halter. Additionally, car could have been included for Canadian access for more information, fostering deep community engagement.
Oh, it's a nice summer, I think. Okay, so do we have a sample of that?
Yes, should be included, impact it, and it's for more context, Rochelle and I had a, you know, after the 8/20 meeting, go over, she wanted trustee vision on this postcard, so it's been in front of me.
Oh, wow. Well, actually, you know, this, this looks great, but I, but I think we can actually now say that we've repaired 100% of the V dance, right? We announced that? I don't know about rapidly, that would be trash, so might we need to take out rapidly? But I think we can legitimately repair it 100%. Smiling, furious, smearing for completion, yeah? Proactively, needed emergency pair, yes, partner with US, well, okay. Um, proactively initiated emergency pair, yes, partner with US, well, okay, how about, you know, partner with this army, revengers, comprehends levy tests. Yeah, I mean, we've, we've submitted a letter, right? They've accepted it, that partnering, or is it, we don't know. Well, what about this honey now? That's, I mean, it's nothing we cure, yes, it's just something that has been printed to us. What I suggest, okay, so I would suggest take the word rapidly out, let's say, of the repair levy image, paying ninety percent to a hundred percent. Um, I'd also take out words streamlined on EMA, reimbursement, I don't, let it as anything. I think the important part is that it's nearing full cession. Like proactively sheet emergency repairs, I think that's true. I guess the question is, we, you know, we, this army already, I mean, yeah, let's, let's say partnering, partnering. Instead of part, that makes it sound like we've already done it, or just the beginning. Those are my suggestions. Um, so, and I know about the, up our vision for the future aggressively, I don't aggressively program, I don't know, are we need aggressively, let's, I take the word aggressively out. Okay, what are, what are, what are their treaties like? Love the truth though, the way.
There's a side of the mailer, so when you're pinned on the end of that.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out.
Would we be able to go back, I mean, to the address?
Since we could do.
This is flawless, with those suggestions that I had, and the logo, yeah, that was great. So do we, can we prove it tonight with those assessments, or do we wait to the final product?
I think we could probably prove it.
Okay, okay. Um, oh, yes, I'll, I would, we should approve it with regions, but first, we will call for public comment. Well, actually, I call public comment.
There is no public comment, there's a wrong.
Okay, the postcard mailer with, with the revision that we discussed.
I'm sure we prove the postcard mailer is going to go out to the worst in the country with regions that we discuss.
Is there a second? Oh, all those favor, I oppose. Great, we have a postcard, thank you so much, Victor, for your work on this, and I'm, I'm very pleased, actually, with this is doubt, thank you. Now, Shrum's son from Versalina, I mean, still working on that, right?
That is correct, I really haven't much of progress on that.
That's okay, uh, there's, this is a lot, so thank you. Um, I have one other question related to this item, that is, um, now that we have the logo, would it possible to put it on our webpage on the county?
It's only possible.
Okay, now, you have logo, do you have it? Right, so I don't need to send it to you.
No.
Okay.
May I suggest that this postcard was divided, that we, something such as maybe like in the size of it by a letter, someone had go on board, hopefully people just receive it and asked, but at least posted?
Good deal, posted aboard, you mean that?
The, the, on Lover's name?
Okay, I see.
Just post the same.
Well, we're actually talking about coming with something similar, but maybe smaller, right? I think that's the idea, so still working on that, it could be similar, because maybe put pictures on there, right?
Because it's pretty large, so.
Is that true?
We could, so we're gonna do something, or is it really gonna be like a, you're gonna post something?
Yeah.
Whatever, user.
Well, I mean, I guess the other thing is, could even just like post all the, we could, we could post all the main data thing. I mean, could, could start with this, basically, you know, size to the, um, sign, and then we'd have to put some of the, um, you know, the, for me, redress every Monday, um, the Q code, you know, with that. Well, I'm sure that, yeah, and I guess maybe just play with size, you know, the sizes, right? I love everything.
Are you not, we can really with the size of the, the, yeah.
It's four by four, it's feet, four feet.
Four feet, okay.
Yeah, it's pretty fine, actually, so, there's, there is, right, there are room for it all. All right, good. Okay, I can, um, five point eight, uh, so, this is discuss and vote on a relution of Pacheco Dam expansion. So first, not gonna be able to vote on it tonight, because we don't have any kind of relution drafted. And actually, that wasn't the main purpose, I put this on the end anyway, I just want to open this discussion about, as a group, the Pacheco Dam expansion, as, as a, the trust, as a district, I guess. Um, reason I thought about this is because Ryan McCarter Valley Waterhead, I mean, I haven't, we don't have any kind of memorandum of understanding with them to help us grant so forth. But Rochelle did actually seek a meeting in that they had a, a County Water Commission meeting on the dam, she, she was the only person speaking in either of the. Um, and I, I don't know, and we've heard from both sides, um, and it put to one side, but I think that it could help them, not our port, if normal way. I personally think that the more water that stays there, the less that will come down to our area. And, you know, the, the person that was opposed to the, the dam's book last year, I can't even remember the, the name of the group at this point. Basically, her point was, if, if creek properly maintained, then there would be flooding, see? And I don't, that's true. Not extreme precipitation events, you know, obviously maintaining the creek will help a lot, but, you know, very, our creek is very flat, right? And if we get a lot of rain in a small period of time, short period of time, twenty three, I think the, the, at the age there near Casa Pruda, I think it went to twenty one, twenty two feet, something like that. So, anyway, I just, we don't have a vote on this tonight, and if we can't, because we don't have a relution to, of a resolution, we'd have to craft something. But I kind of wanted to visit, because it's a long time since we talked about it, and I want to see how the trustees felt about this point.
Can you bring the next me? Pull it for Dan, then you have the next me.
We certainly can, we could even table it until next year, when we have a different makeup on the barboard, I mean, we want to do that. We can wait until next, next year.
Only, the only little things about this, when we took, three years ago, because we took my break, the, the, while, and while they bring the, the longer have they him, they was gonna more, is, is exactly the his weekend, and they, the first, they break, I think, all the things are broken.
Well, yeah, that is true, that true. Although a lot of debris was a result of flood, well, right? So it's kind of hard to say what happened first, I don't know if that's correct, but.
Yes, please, when you make a little tree, and the water, one, there are, oh, you so many, and those they to make, uh, beach, you know, one, the, the water is pumped to the, to him, center, water inside.
Well, yes, that's definitely true, so, all right, I mean, you know, it's fine, we can wait, I mean, we could wait, have our rock study, our, our G study, and see what that, um, says, but anyway. Would, so should we tell Steve?
We wait next year, we know we'll be in winter weather at point.
Right.
Right now it's just us, we're gonna get a little more flat too.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, you know, the dam is, is gonna be built tomorrow, I mean, this is gonna be like ten, ten years of luck, so. Oh, oh, yeah, hopefully, I don't, I don't, I don't know. Um, yeah, no, that's okay, um, I just, I would be out there, if anyone is interested in speaking on a personal level, right, as a resident of the, of the area, or if we do that, right? If we don't affiliate with it as board. All right, um, is there any public comment on five point eight?
Yes, Mike, Lena, you didn't mute, you have a minute.
I think the afternoon due to speak on item, Mike, can you hear stop J D M pushing calling in Sacramento, I appreciate rapid flood concerns that the district faces, and I just want to reiterate some of our previous comments, since I said that the primary purpose of Cheko Dam is not flooding, but it's a water source. And so it's not likely that it actually ever would use to achieve full control, attenuating effect. Um, the, the, on that, the attenuating effect, the dam is that, as I was thinking about this and hearing you speak on this, I had a map of the Paharo River watershed, and the dam is on one ran in the purple shade of waterhead on Cheko Creek, um, that's the only feeds in the watershed. And I hesitate just a little bit to watch it, that the area, the water, the defect, and attenuate, constitute less than twenty five percent of the watershed. You know, most water for the river is to south you, you know, because the water had wrapped around and had, um, a valley south, so it had only small, even if it was to be used to, with light profile, it only has a very small, um, effect on its whole water and contribute to flood flow. So it cannot probably give a significant flood trial, in your opinion, I think, um, would come at cost of interrupting, inundating of ranchlands or ranchlands that provide a significant economic benefit to the county, um, portions of heart that all have, um, economic effects to counties and region, uh, or part, uh, in addition to tourism and hunting and so forth. So, um, just wanted to bring that, you know, fully understanding of the concern you face, and I'm thinking for the afternoon speak.
Thank you.
We have an addition public.
Okay, well, we can move on, because we decided not to run this, in any case, so, all right, let's move to five point nine, announcements, um, I don't think I have any, does any of the trustees have announcements? Okay, um, any public comment? We have five point ten, special future agenda items, uh, we'll of course be talking about the status of, well, not much to talk about anymore, this, this is a heavy rip, but maybe burn bell. And we'll also be talking about the EMA, we all talk about those items, and new grant, HUD grant, is there anything else? And of course, we'll be talking about loverings, but are there, um, things that people would like to put on the agenda? All right, um, oh, all right, um, is there any public comment?
We have no public comment, we're on zoom.
All right, thank you, so the only thing is to adjourn the meeting, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Actually, when will we be reading?
Uh, July twenty eighth will be the next meeting, right, fourth day, one, yeah, July twenty eighth is the next meeting.
Okay, I motioned to adjourn the meeting, June the third, and return July twenty eighth.
There is a second. The host said, I, I should say, I, okay, opposed. All right, meeting adjourned, we will see you July twenty eighth, thank you.